So it's six oh five, why don't we go ahead and get started? This session is recorded, being recorded, and it'll be available tomorrow. So if you have friends and neighbors that missed it for whatever reason, they can access the recording tomorrow. So let me just start with, my name is Ed John, I'm the interim principal here at Sorkin High School. Retired from Salem Kaiser, I was administrator in Salem Kaiser School District for thirty years. Retired and been doing some kind of part-time things the last two years. I've been at Sorkin High School, part-time with, working with administrative team. So I know everyone and know all the staff and, and I'm excited to be here in this interim position for the remainder of the year. And towards the spring, the superintendent is, has made a commitment that he's going to involve parents and students and the staff and even the community in a process, pretty extensive process in advertising and interviewing applicants for the permanent principal position. So you're able to get somebody that's going to be here for the long term. So for this evening, I've set aside about forty-five minutes for the session. And there are some questions that were submitted already, we're going to address those. And then any other questions that end up in the Q and A, we'll try to pick off some of those. And any that we don't get to, we will have an admin team meeting tomorrow, respond to those and get that out to you as well. So for tonight, our panel, myself, Mrs. Dresser, Assistant Principal, Mr. Rice, Assistant Principal, Dr. Heinz, Technology Coordinator, and Aiden Barr, Technology Guru. So I just want to share a few things, then Dr. Heinz will share some specific technology tips for parents. And I saw that slideshow and I think you'll find that very helpful. And then Dr. Heinz will also respond to some questions that were in the Q and A that were pretty technology-specific. So he'll respond to those and then we'll take a look at any others that might be showing up. So a couple of things I want to share with you before we get that far is the calendar. If you notice, the calendar is a little bit different than the one we saw first of September. Because of those eight days that the district was closed down, I think the day after Labor Day for about eight school days, the district was closed down, the fire, the ash, so many families that were had to be evacuated and displaced to some extent. We lost those eight days. And so instead of having to go to school in July, the district says, I think we can still capture as many school days as we need for accreditation. But we're going to have to lose a couple of holidays and some of those grading days. And I think one of those grading days is coming up October ninth. So that won't be a grading day, that's regular school day. So the good part is, we'll still have graduation June seventeenth rather than early July. So we'll have to kind of live with the new calendar. I set that out the other day, so hopefully you have that. You know, last spring, we had distance learning and over the summer realized that wasn't very effective. And so we've moved to comprehensive distance learning, which is the Ingenuity Program and Canvas. And Ingenuity is the program that has the, the standards and the curriculum. And then Canvas is kind of the teaching platform. So it's new, it's new to the school staff, it's new to students and it's new to parents. Every time we have a meeting on Monday, we had a staff meeting. We went over what are some things that we're still having issues with and try to identify them specifically. And who's going to help us learn those? So we're, we're learning as you are and as the students are. So I guess we're asking for a little patience and grace as we're working on that together. Then yesterday, at Department Coordinator Meeting, we again looked at some of those and identified individuals in each department that were kind of the, the go-to person that can help our colleagues in figuring out how to do some of those things. So we're learning and Dr. Heinz is going to talk about some sessions for parents as well. So daily schedule I sent out the other day as well, you know, Monday is applied learning and assignment. So there's no live meetings, but students are to log on with the teacher and get the assignments and work on those kind of on their own. But the teacher is online for the day. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday are live meetings. There's a nine o'clock meeting and eleven o'clock meeting. Tuesday and Thursday are first and third periods, Wednesday and Friday are fifth and seventh period. So those are the live meetings and then they'll also be pushing out some assignments. So teachers have the live meetings in the morning, then in the afternoon, they're also available to push out assignments and to respond to students as they have questions about some of those assignments. Attendance, you know, each day students are to complete an exit ticket so that we know they're there. They're kind of taking attendance for themselves. We do enter attendance into system and we have folks that are calling students or parents when we see that they're not there. Attendance's important, we need students to be there, to be engaged in learning. We're wanting this year to be successful for students so that they feel like I learned some things. I am learning what I need to be learning to move on to the next step, whether that's next year or college, whatever it might be. So we're wanting our curriculum to have rigor, we're wanting students to be engaged so that they know they're learning. We have some evidence that they're really learning, so it's important for students to be engaged. Some of the questions that were sent in, one was, why can't you have the governor get us back into school? Well, we don't get to have much input with the governor, but I do know that there is a big rally at the Capitol Building. I think on Monday, there are a lot of folks that are wanting to get kids back in school. Governor, like all of us, want to balance that with, when is it safety? When is it safe? We want to ensure that our kids remain healthy and safe. And so hopefully there's a balance and that will happen sooner than later. There's another question about, you know, how are the schedules created? You know, it kind of depends on the grade level and any requests that the students were able to submit. But basically, for those four classes, ideally be nice to have two electives and two required classes. And looking at some of the student schedules today, I saw some students that had four electives. But then I also looked at their second semester schedule and they had four core classes, English and math, the science and social studies. Ideally, we'd like to have that balance and some cases we couldn't because we needed to balance the class load in each class. But you know, if you have specific questions about that, I would encourage you to connect with your son or daughter's counselor. But we had to try to balance those the best we could. So at this point, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Heinz to kind of share with you some, some specific technology tips and then move to some of those questions that you'd already submitted. See if we can answer those. And then at the end of that, if we have time left, we'll answer any questions or as many questions as we can there in the Q and A. So with that, Dr. Heinz.
Thanks, Mr. John. I just want to welcome you to our town hall. And I don't know that we're going to answer all the questions today, but we're committed to tomorrow at noon and Tuesday at noon, having open sessions where technology can, questions, you can kind of bring your technology questions to a couple of people that have a lot of experience with the toolsets that we're using. So I'm going to share my screen here and walk through about ten slides and walk through some of the Q and A questions that we've been asked and then add in some additional information. Also want to make sure that I introduce my co-presenter, Aiden Barr, one of Silverton's finest. And I just want to say how much we've appreciated him this last summer as a former student and a technology student. I hope it's okay to share this, Aiden, but the heart of a teacher, the mind of an engineer and the hands of a student. He has really filled out a lot of supports that we would not have been able to put in place without him. So thanks, Aiden, for joining tonight and he'll be helping me as we get into these specific tools. Silver Falls has a history of using students as they're launching to make things even a little bit better and we're continuing that. So we're going to talk a little bit about student devices. Third grade through twelfth is Chromebook, so we're going to focus a little bit on that. You can troubleshoot just by turning off and on. The Chromebook makes a big difference, but there's a power washing procedure we can go over tomorrow during noon as well to kind of reset things. And as a way to reconnect to wireless, that might be something that we could go over tomorrow that would be helpful as well. But student devices, Class Link Login, a place where everybody kind of goes, teachers and students to start and get logged on. And then Canvas Learning Management System, that's what LMS stands for. And then the Ingenuity Courseware, that is the resources, that curriculum that students work through, videos, tutorials, quizzes in most classes, that the sixth grade through twelfth. So comprehensive distance learning encompasses these kind of three big things. And our purpose today is to get you as parents and stakeholders a few more steps ahead in this first couple of weeks of school. So with regard to the technology, again, restarting the device anytime with, it doesn't matter, the device pretty much, but a hard resetting it, turning off and turning back on should be your first troubleshooting step. And it'll probably take care of about fifty percent of the challenges. And sometimes you don't know why that happened or some login's not working or it's not connecting to the wifi. And sometimes just turning it off and turning it back on makes a big difference in just troubleshooting that first step. And feel free in, jump in here as we're starting and, and add in and, and contribute. When we get to your slides, I'm sure you're probably ready for that. So K5 is different than 612. So when we talk about Ingenuity as the curriculum and resources, if you have younger kids, it's important to recognize we use a K5 tool that's instructional services from Ingenuity. And the same company has a different tool called Courseware for sixth grade through twelfth. So the same steps for troubleshooting and login and other things are different with the K5 than it is with the 612. And so if you have littles and you have bigs in your family, that is important to understand. With Canvas, Canvas is great with notifications, so it's a communications tool as well as it is a tracking tool and learning management tool. So setting up those notifications when you log in so that you can get text messages or emails when things change or when assignments are posted or when the deadlines are changed or something's been finished. Those notifications are important as a student. Canvas isn't a tool where parents are in with the students. So as a parent of two high schoolers using Canvas and Google Meet and Zoom for different purposes, I, I focus my attention of looking over the shoulder physically and then checking in with them. And we'll talk a little about, about that when we get there. So observing over the shoulder your student is the best method because then you get the real scoop. Show me what you did today, show me the assignment you finished, show me the project that's due on Thursday. That interaction is as valuable, if not more valuable than, you know, the gotcha check on the grade book of, you know, hey, you said you got fifteen and it looks like you only got ten out of twenty. That interaction with the child every day makes a big difference, it does in my home and I know it will in yours as well. So conduct those daily check-ins. This slide provides a workflow to some extent. I mean, it's, it's a kind of talks to the login process, like the Class Link that we use to login. Launchpad dot ClassLink.com/SilverFalls. That, that, that link is on every Chromebook and every iPad in the district. So Class Link is where you go to start. And then you get into Canvas where you've got kind of the, the announcements and the thread of things that are going on. And then you link out to Ingenuity. And if you have a synchronous meeting, a live meeting like this, you would interact with your teacher using Google Meet. That's the tool we use that's kind of like Zoom, but it's Google Meet. And then Wozzle is where you're going to get your grades. So all grades are manually entered by the teacher into Wozzle from Canvas and Ingenuity. And then they're entered into Wozzle, so Wozzle will continue to be our tool. And there's a grade book link on the parent links on every website in the district. And we'll make sure and show you what that is, but it's real super simple and you log in, it's one link. And the view is the same for students as it is for parents. So that parent view in Wozzle Grade Book is super simple to get to. And if you haven't seen that before and you're new to the district, let's, we'll get you, we'll get you in there and, and show you around. And then the courseware that's listed there as well. I hope this makes sense, I think visually it kind of starts to come together. And this is where I'm going to start to kind of rely more on Aiden and his bullet points here. So Aiden, you want to take it away here?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the highlights of this year is we've now introduced a new application called Class Link. This place now takes the place of that giant page that your students would see of all the different links that they could click on. This is now what we're calling the Single Sign-On Program, which is a one-stop shop for all of the applications within our district that your student will be accessing, whether that's Canvas, Courseware, K5 Instructional Services, Grade Book, Reading Assistance, all of those programs that students would need to click on a link, sign in with, with an account profile. That is now going to be taken care of what is called a Class Link. And usually, again, this reduces the need for students to enter in their login information or remembering, hey, what was my email address again? Especially if you're that K5 family of needing a kindergarten to remember their email and lunch, lunch number. That's definitely hard for some students to remember. So this reduces that need to enter in that login information.
And I see at least one Q and A coming in and feel free to put your questions in the Q and A box. If this is a great time to kind of invite you to do that. I do have four questions that we'll go over, but please put those in the Q and A.
And then from Canvas, and this is, or from Class Link, my apologies. Really how the school day is supposed to go is that a student goes to, whether if they're at Scott's Mills, they go to their Scott's Mills home website, if they're at the high school, they go to the high school website. And there's the button called Student Links. On that Student Links, it'll bring them to Class Link. And then from there, they should be going directly into Canvas. Now Canvas, from what we've been able to explain to teachers and now what we're informing you as the learning coaches or the parents, Canvas is the classroom of, this is where students are coming, this is where they're going to, to get the information that they need from their teachers, to meet with them personally or to get the online lecture that their teacher is going to go through about what today's lesson is going to be, watching any material that the teacher is putting out regarding, hey, this is what you're supposed to be doing for math today, or this is the English lesson that you may have missed yesterday. So it's all the information that teachers are putting out for your students to look back on. In a sense, this is kind of that, that save file of all the information. It's that repository of information that your students may need access to. And then it's also served for that daily check-in of, it's again, of every single day besides Mondays, teachers are going to be checking in with your students and, and sending them communications, whether that's through emails or announcements. This is also where if a teacher is needing to make an announcement to a whole entire class, they'll be making it within Canvas. And then Canvas will send your student an email after that teacher has made an announcement.
Notifications are so important. I think the first thing that a student should do when they log in is set up notifications correctly. Wouldn't you say? I mean, every college class I've, I've taken or taught, the notifications are one of the first things, that's the reminder. And I think there's a lot of teachers that are recommending students put that in the notifications so that they get text messages and emails. All right, next slide, sorry about that. There we go. Oh, this one's mine anyway. Okay, so this, the courseware, remember Ingenuity for K5 is something different. Instructional Service is what it's called, it's secondary, it's sixth grade through twelfth, it's Ingenuity, but it's Courseware. And Courseware is a self-paced or student-paced curriculum that does the work to some extent, the instruction for them. I would say the majority of the teacher of the, of the classes at the high school are being taught with Canvas as a shell, as a place to start and to connect and get to the Google Meet sessions and get linked out to the Ingenuity and then all those things. But then Ingenuity is the content and the resource. And in this context, those courses, when they go into that class, it's got a self-paced module which shows them half they're behind or, or in front of where they should be in the class. And because our, our quarters are so short and the course content is expected to cover, you're probably already getting notifications, lots of notifications and messages that your child is behind or that it's not finishing. And I just want to reiterate here, it's self-paced with lots of reminders. So there's lots of notifications going on saying, you haven't finished, you didn't spend the specified amount of time that was an estimate of the amount of time to finish the stuff that was needed in that class or you didn't finish the quiz at a certain seventy percent to pass since you have to retake this section. So there'll be some, a lot of notifications and information that comes. The teacher's getting those notifications as well. So managed by your teacher, so listen to your teacher, what they say, if you're on track or not. You're going to get a lot of information through Ingenuity in terms of the students pacing. Listen to your teacher as if they're on pace or not. And where would you go to find that information? Wozzle Grade Book. And so it's going to be really important that the teachers are watching those monitors of the Ingenuity and the Canvas assignments over here. And they're going and putting those manually into the grade book in Wozzle so that clear communication of the things that are anchored of assignments and discussion, the things that are required. And then the progress report and then the final grade. So all of that happens in Wozzle, just like it always did. This is just a quick shot of in Courseware, these tiles represent each class child's taking. So Language Arts, a math class, History Class, maybe elective, a dynamic class or something. And on this student page, when they log in, they're going to go into this class and do their work. And then it's going to be red, yellow or green depending upon where they're at and if they're on pace to finish the course. And again, it's going to give you a lot of notifications. And as a parent, if you're, if you've got a login, there is a method, we'll go over tomorrow, Tuesday, tomorrow and Tuesday, of setting up a parent portal login. It's a several steps, but I've got a little slideshow of greatness that we'll put together into a movie like Aiden. And I've done a lot of this summer, I think we've spent more time in front of a camera than neither of us, either of us had, had done before. And we'll continue that process as we get parents supported in the future. So here we go, as if you click the blue next activity will begin working, it's right to left navigation. You just click in and then you get started on the assignments. This kind of wraps it up and reminds, it gives you some information about connecting tomorrow. This tiny URL dot com slash SHS Tech Noon, that's the shortcut. So you can just click, one click to get that and we'll put it on our parent square. And I'll have Derek Michael Fresh put it, push it out by parent square or on our website, something where we can continue to get the, the notice out. And we might keep doing this if it's well received and people are appreciating the tech support on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We'll just kind of make it a habit of this through October if it's being received well and continue as needed. And we also have a really great site. Aiden, you want to talk a little bit about what Canvas for Families is intended to do and I'll see if I can bring it up here?
Yeah, absolutely. So one, as even before we started the school year, we saw the need to develop a platform just for you as, as parents or learning coaches. And this website, we developed just for you. It provides you with all the material that you need. It's continuously being updated with new, new information. I'm seeing questions in the chat pertaining to some videos that we do not have out yet. And those videos, now that we know about them, will be coming. We already have the resources, already started creating for it. And this is where all that information will be found, whether that's for a learning coach, whether you need some information about Ingenuity or if your students need some information, this is the page to go to. And really, it's, it's there for you as a resource. And that's, I think, the, the biggest topic about this year, whether that's for teaching, teachers or students is, what are the resources do I have at my fingertips? And this is just one that we've developed for you. And of course, we always love feedback of how we can improve as well, so.
Yeah, feedback, you know, work without feedback is torture. And so we really appreciate your questions and your feedback. So I just want to hit the four questions I had in the Q and A. And as we get there, Aiden helped me form these responses, so I'll just read them off. And with the first question had to do with accessing assignments, where do I find out what is due? What's missing, what's, how do I get to the recorded sessions? We know those kinds of systems and hopefully the overview and the kind of walkthrough we did of, you start with Class Link to log in. And then you get into Canvas where kind of all the communication things are happening, there's a messaging system in there as well. And then those students go off and they work in Ingenuity. And then you're going to get your grades from Wozzle, just like you always did. Hopefully that kind of clarifies, I think, a lot of that. You want to address the recorded sessions, Aiden? We are recording every live session. Every teacher teaches, is recorded or is supposed to be recorded. When they log in, there's first, there's some controls at the bottom and they can hit record. And then they're able to share that to their Canvas page or you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so with how teachers are, teachers have been trained how to do recordings with Google Meet. They are, they have been trained where they hit a record button and then that gets sent to their Google Drive. They are either choosing to share a file with all their recorded videos in it or they are manually sharing each one of those videos and posting them within Canvas. If you end up going to Canvas, you should see a button or image that says Recorded Meets. Clicking on that button will bring you to a page with then another redirect link that will bring you to either the video or the Google Drive file with those videos in it. If you're not seeing those, you need to be reaching out to your teacher asking, hey, just, just curious, why didn't we say today's lesson or yesterday's lesson, since it is a process for twenty-four hours to be able to get those videos up?
And it takes a little while to render. So once you hit the record button and you stop the recording, it does take as much as twenty, thirty minutes during peak times, sometimes even for that teacher to go back and get that recording. It's not like, you know, all the kind of consumer tools we're used to, like, why don't you have it right now? And we need to also be patient with teachers in terms of their learning curve of going to get that recording in their folder, sharing that and then getting it into Canvas. So there's definitely a process in that. And we've started the training process, but we appreciate your grace in the same regard. All right, second question here has to do with the recorded sessions and posted. And we said, in Canvas, teachers should have a button, let's see, post to the links, just exactly, I'm not going to reread what Aiden just answered, great job. All right, number five question, I received login for Ingenuity Parent Portal, but it has no, has no information at all. See the screenshots? And this was a question that was received. So Ingenuity Courseware for 612 requires students to log in through Class Link. So students log in through Class Link and they're able to get to both Canvas and instructional and, and Courseware. The parent portal is an invitation, you get an invitation, you have to go through a process of verifying the email. It sends you a link, you have to verify that that person, and then you have to put in, you have to use the code that the teacher would provide as a four-digit code in order to activate that and link it to your students' accounts. There's a multiple-step process that we're just kind of getting familiar with here that would give you parent portal access. But again, as a parent of two high school kids, the best method is over the shoulder. By the way, they have an acronym here too, Parent Over Shoulder, if you haven't heard of that, like PEO. So let's do, let's do this as parents, come together and like, you know, parent over shoulder. Well, I'm going to spend time over the shoulder and making sure that my kiddos are, are on track. And that's, that's the best way to do this is to focus on what they've done and see the progress and the assignments they have to do. Let's see. And I think that kind of answers, if we didn't address that, put it in Q and A and we'll see if we can address it. And we'll also have time at noon tomorrow, Thursday and Tuesday. Parent Portal, two primary parents are listed in the parent information. So those come from the student information system. Our student information system in the district has two parent slots for two parents. And so those two parents should get the notifications. And so there is a process of updating those with registration and all that. So, but we pulled those directly from student information system. All right, last one, I want to see a video overview and PowerPoint slides. So what I, one of the best approaches I've seen with online learning is go ahead and record the entire session like we did today. But then as soon as it's clear in your mind and you've got the objectives and the questions that were asked, which we can include, then we sit down and we record a quick five-minute summary. So what I'll guarantee is tonight, as soon as we finish tonight, while it's still fresh in my mind, I'll see if Aiden wants to stay up for another hour. See, probably got homework to do. But if we could summarize this in a quick five-minute video and then we can send that out with the invitation to Thursday and Friday. That quick summary is better than, you know, people having to watch a whole hour video again. Let's see, Wozzle Grade Book, parents can connect to the grade book as they always have. In the case of checking assignments and due dates, at a glance, Canvas is a great place to do that over the shoulder, your kiddo. And then on the left bar navigation under gray, under assignments is a great place to see that in Canvas. But again, the only place where all the final grades are going to be located is Wozzle Grade Book. The calendar is another great thing in Canvas to be able to see the to-do list. And then once you have finished the assignment And then once you have finished the assignment in canvas, it it comes off here to do this. But again, ingenuity doesn't talk to canvas. So ingenuity's assignments are going to be over here where they're working from left to right. Canvas is the connection tool. And then the grade book is where you're going to go and see how the students uh, doing. And I think it addressed most of the, yeah, I think we hit off all four here. So what do I, is there any Q and A that has to do with tech that we could um, help folks so they wouldn't have to join tomorrow?
Yes, I think there's a couple. Um, the first one is what is the username and password for Wozzle grade book?
The, as I understand it, that that sent through, um, and there's a link even. Somebody fill in that gap for me. Not 100% sure. So this is, oh, let me share my screen here. I believe that is granted by your um, school. And I'm going to have to check on the process at Silverton High School, what that looks like. I know what it looks like at our K eights. But I'm not sure what that looks like at the high school. Can somebody fill in that for me? That Heidi Johnny question?
What they need to do is uh, via Heidi Everly, she has that password. Most of them have that, but she would need to, they could contact her.
Okay. And um, we'll go over that tomorrow at Thursday, uh, kind of a process. Maybe we'll generate a form or something to streamline that. So we get a spreadsheet of folks that are asking for access to grade book because that'll be a ten, that'll be a friction point. So there is an address where you go to and the view for grade book is the same for your students as well as teachers. But while's a great book.
Drew, we do have a couple more, but I just want to remind our folks that we are going to be answering these questions tomorrow as an admin and sending them out with the recording. So um, we can be aware of that. But another question was, um, Drew, do you want to touch on, um, there's a question regarding the assignments and due dates in ingenuity, you know, may may not be accurate or up to date. Um, and how that compares to Wozzle and grade book. And we want to make sure folks are are in the grade book to receive that information.
Right. Yeah, it's going to be really important that the grade book be the place where they watch and monitor, but over the shoulder is where you're getting the real-time information, right? If your kid's learning and if they're doing the tasks and ask them about the assignments. But again, the teacher is going to be the primary uh, person who knows if they're on track. That's a good place to be. Start there with the live sessions, making sure that the assignments and things that they that the student knows that that's the most, that teacher or student relationship is the most important part. In ingenuity, the start and end date in the course is the number of weeks for the course. And then they put the assignments in there and they separate them out by how many assignments um, that can, that that are needing to be done. And so they're divided by the number of weeks start and end date. And so it's going to show you're behind if you have not spent adequate time logged in as well as if you haven't completed a certain level, 70% or whatever the particular course is. And I would, I should say that there are courses at the high school that are not using ingenuity as well. They're just using canvas.
Um, another question is, is can notifications be sent to both students and parents? I think you touched on that a little bit with the parent portal. They can set up their own notifications at that point and the uh, student should be setting up their own.
Again, canvas doesn't have the ability for parents to uh, be observers. So they're going to look over the shoulder of the student with regard to canvas. Ingenuity does have a parent portal function uh, that you can see and track. And it is a great report. I'll share the five slides I put together for um, kind of how that looks like in the process of getting registered. And then there's a attendance report and a progress report. There are just two reports to see how your kid is doing. And um, I think that that access would be really useful if their kids are logging in and spending the kind of time they need to. But again, canvas is just the tool for connecting ingenuity, progress, and Wozzle is going to be the place final where the scores and grades are going to rest.
I think too, I think to expand upon that is um, if you're wanting to receive the notifications like from announcements or emails so that your student is receiving from their teacher, there is a way to um, add your email into their account to be able to receive those notifications. And you can customize it to be like every week I want to get a progress report of what is assigned to my student or I want to know when my students are submitting assignments. Those are all customizable. And as I said earlier, again, we haven't been aware of what parents are needing really until now. And now that we know, again, that information is going to be coming out and going to be populated on that canvas for families website.
One-stop-shop. Thanks, James, for monitoring chat. It's a great practice of teachers having an assistant, a support as well as here. So thank you for modeling that, James. We also tried to spiral, introduce the content and we'll also try to follow that practice of providing a summary video of the entire presentation.
I think that's all the tech-specific questions. You guys can kind of hang on and maybe support us, but I think the other ones uh, will uh, have Mr. Ed John um, address if we can go there. So Mr. John, um, a couple of the questions kind of tie together. One was, um, does canvas feed attendance? And the short answer to that would be no, but do you want to talk a little bit about how attendance is being processed um, by our students? You talked about that at the beginning, but we did have a question.
Yeah, just basically, um, in each of those sessions, the students at the end of the session are supposed to complete a uh, exit ticket indicating that they were there, they were present. And then those all get entered into attendance. Uh, and we have folks that uh, call students and or parents when we haven't seen them for a while. So attendance is important. We follow up and call, but it's it's basically the, even though teachers are, you know, kind of calling role as they're um, you know, starting their class and looking at all their uh, 25 smiling faces as close as we get for right now. The students actually complete the exit ticket and that records their attendance. You know, it's one of those things where not only is teaching different during COVID, uh, obviously parenting is different during COVID, but uh, now you have to kind of look over the shoulder and look at uh, how they're doing and what are they doing? And and um, it's, it's different, but it's one of those things where it's going to take a village to raise a child and and we're in this with you and we appreciate you being in it with us. We're, we can't make this work without you and and you need us as well. But I think working together and we're learning together and and I appreciate your uh, grace and patience as we fix some things that we're not very good at it. And um, I think this Thursday at noon and Tuesday at noon are going to help you. Dr. Heinz is working with our teachers and kind of filling in blanks where we're missing some things. I've made some notes on uh, some things I need to share with the teachers tomorrow. Couple of them is make sure you record your lessons. We've made a commitment that they're recorded. So make sure they are recorded so that people can access that. And then the other commitment I'm making is that teachers are responsive to uh, emails. So if you email a teacher and said, I'm stuck on this, I'm wondering about this, could you help with this? My commitment is that uh, within 24 hours, they'll be responsive. At least they'll be, it will get back to you and say, great question. I'm working on it. Let me uh, let me follow up and see where we are. But uh, we want to have good communication with you and we want to have a good partnership with you and and we're going, we're going to make it work. I mean, we uh, don't have any choice. We want our kids to have a successful year. And uh, so we're going to work hard to make sure that happens. James, are there any others that we need to pick off tonight or do we?
I, I think the, I think the last one, there, there was a concern about, we started two weeks later in the schedule than what was originally planned. How, how are we supposed to make up those days? I know you addressed a little bit with the schedule at the beginning, but um, ma- maybe again, just talk a little bit about how we took some of the vacation and grading days out to make up tho- those days.
Yeah, the um, the grading days are out. And so that's a regular school day. End service day, a state end service day is out. That's regular school day. And um, and we're, we're going later. Uh, we're going until uh, I think June 21st, graduation is June 17th, but the last day is June 20, 21st. If we had not taken care of some of those holidays and end service days and grading days, we'd be going to school in July. So had to make the adjustment so that we um, could finish towards the middle of June. But at the same time, get in enough uh, hours and days to meet uh, O D E requirements for accreditation.
That is all we had for questions um, at this time. So I think just to share again that we will have answers typed up and share with the recording when this goes out.
Hey, thank you so much for joining us and hopefully this was helpful. And I encourage you to um, join the meeting Thursday at noon and Tuesday at noon. And I know I'm learning new things in technology every day. Hey, thank you again. Uh, thank you so much. And again, it's um, my pleasure, my privilege and pleasure to be the interim principal at the Silverton High School. We have a lot of great things going and I want to continue the uh, great things that um, have been going on already and we'll move forward. Thank you so much.